I'm on wireless 39 right now. Check. Seven, eight. Wow, that one's good. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Just one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Testing, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Testing, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Eleven, twelve. You want to set the camera shot from there and give you a white balance? It's a white balance with podium shot. Check, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Test, one, two, three, four, five. You able to see the white on the podium shot? Must be set to one touch if you haven't set it yet. That looks good, all right. I'm going to go to the center if you want.
How many more? I know, I was. The weather sounds horrible. I would zoom if you want to. I am very busy. I am very focused. I have so much to do. 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 Otherwise. I usually am there. I usually stay there. Yeah. Who knows? I try to look down. 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 There are several locations in three of the people. One of them is high. Down in the. Four apart. Oh, I love this. Let me see. I didn't even know. I don't 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 know. I don't. Listen, you know.
What happened here?
I wish I brought a last one. Can you do it right now? Maybe you'll be fine. That's how I felt about this. I was just. 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 I wish I brought a last one. Can you do it right now? Maybe you'll be fine. That's how I felt about this. I was just. 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 Danielle. I thought he was sure. He said he was. 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 Yeah, but that's not right. We're still possessing the bar. We're conscious. So. That's right. It's a surprise. You have to get a hell of a name. It's in the end of the old. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. I hear that one. I didn't know that. 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 Oh, well. Oh, yeah. I did. 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 I told you that was right. 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 Yes. The other day. And that makes for that. And all of us. 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 And all of us.
We are in agreement that this is what we want to do. We have no money to do this with. There's no funding set aside for just in case purchases of plots of land. So it would be nice if we had that kind of money. But so we would need to figure out where do we get that money from? Do we need to bond it? Do we need to rebudget something else? So that process, I imagine, would take some time, some number of months at least. So and that's from the time we have a decision. And I don't think we're at the point where we have a decision. So this is not something that is going to unfold quickly in days or weeks, in my opinion. Does that answer your question or address it?
Yeah, no, I think it's just a fair point to put out there so that people understand that this is more than just idea generation at this point. There's logistics to what path we decide to go down.
Does anyone have any other thoughts?
I'll just say, I, you know, I've been watching the community-wide conversation around this particular address on Main Street for many months. And I'm excited to hear what folks have to say and their thoughts around how this fits into the even longer conversation that we've had around the downtown vision and what the community really wants to see as the look and the feel and the experience of the downtown. The point that I wanted to make, just as it relates to the funding and the process, is that in addition to purchasing the land, if the town decided to go forward with that, whatever the plan is to use it would also have funding implications. And so we would need to be thinking about what is the budget, not just for the land purchase, but whatever the cost would be for all of the ideas that some of you are going to bring forward tonight. So that's really what I will be listening for as well, is what is the whole package for any kind of plan around this lot.
Yeah, good point. One other note on funding is that typically when the town does enter into a real estate transaction, it's not something we broadcast in public and negotiate in this kind of a forum, right? It's something we say, yes, we're interested in purchasing or selling a piece of real estate. We would go through all the diligence and process we would for any other transaction. That's one of the things that we, one of the few things that we don't do in public typically. So. Other thoughts? All right. So for those of you who have done this before, you know the drill. If you're on Zoom, there's a raise hand button somewhere on your screen, and we'll kind of queue you up. If you're in the room, feel free to step up to the podium or ask for someone to pass you a mic. And then if you know you want to speak, feel free to kind of queue up behind the people who are at the podium. That makes it easier. When you do get the floor, tell us who you are, where you're from, and then we'll start the three-minute timer, and we'll try and be polite about it. Who wants to kick it off?
You doing in the room first or on Zoom? 10 people on Zoom.
With your hands up?
No hands up yet.
No hands up yet. All right. Thank you, Joyce.
Anytime. Joyce Veyou from down in the Flying Pointways. We don't often get a chance in life to do a do-over, but I think that the town has one now and that we should grab it and run with it. We have an opportunity, again, to purchase 22 Main Street, and I totally support that purchase. It is a natural connector between Town Hall and the Public Safety Building. And as many of us know, we're going to be growing out of our Public Safety Building space very soon. That would be a natural place to put in a police station. Oh, wasn't the police station there years ago in one of those little two houses? Hmm, full circle. There are hundreds of possible uses. When I look into the future and at that lot, I see a place where young people of this town can enjoy being. Maybe an oval skate park with a curling court in the middle, outdoor sculptures, native flower beds, chest and backgammon tables, playground equipment for physically handicapped children, and colorful benches, just to name a few. I believe that we already own two town parks, and it is now time to look at new uses for 22 Main, not to duplicate or move what is already happening elsewhere. I also think it's time that we hear what the young people that participated in our discussions with the principal group said, that they need a place in town that they like and that they could hang. And those were a few of the things that they mentioned. But before we can do that, we need to purchase 22 Main Street. Thank you.
Thank you, Joyce. Yes, feel free to line up.
Hi, I'm Margaret Morphet, and I'm from present Freeport for the last 37 years. And I'm one of the people running the Freeport Farmers Market.
The mic doesn't do anything for the room.
This one?
No, that's only for the people online. It doesn't do anything for the room. So it's not going to make her any louder if she uses one mic or another.
Can you not hear me?
Turn this way, yes.
I'm not talking to you guys.
Good job, Margaret.
Okay. So I think probably most of you know I've been working on the Freeport Farmers Market. And as our first year, we were at 22 Main Street. And it was a great year for us. It really worked very well. It was very visible. It looked rural, which is really important to a farmer's market. And it was a great place for the first year for people to see us and get to know that we were there. So we were very happy to be there. And we're not the only ones who like that site. Visit Freeport also found it very useful. And so for those of you who don't know Visit Freeport, led by Kelly Edwards, is the marketing organization that promotes businesses in Freeport. So starting in 2019, they used 22 Main as one of the sites for its annual Freeport Fall Festival. And Kelly particularly liked that space because one of their goals is to help people move through the town to benefit as many businesses as is possible. And this starts at the very beginning of town and carries right on through, which was great for them. And then in the summer of 2020, when the pandemic hit, they started Makers on Main, and they used the same format. Again, 22 Main was their most southern site of the pop-up markets that they ran. Kelly writes, "22 Main quickly became a favorite location of our vendors and shoppers at both events. It's an exceptionally pleasant place to spend the day. Terrific visibility also serves as a visual clue to travelers arriving from the south that sometimes something special is happening in town on a given day." She goes on to say, "Green space on Main Street in Freeport is an endangered species. We encourage you to consider 22 Main as the perfect place for a multi-use park. Keep the stone wall around the perimeter and the lovely old trees. Add some plantings, benches, and picnic tables. Visitors to our information centers often ask for a playground. With some limited grading and fresh grass, we could continue to be a place for people to gather and relax, and also be activated by events like Freeport Fall Festival and Makers on Main and more." That's from Kelly. For me, I would say the Farmers Market and the Freeport have both experienced a great benefit of having 22 Main available as a multi-use park-like setting. As Kelly noted and the vision plan for the town recommends, green space should be a priority. If one assumes that that's true, 22 Main is one of the few spots available where we can take advantage of what already exists and make this charming entrance to Freeport even more attractive with a relatively little effort. Adding a children's playground maybe together with a farmer's pavilion. It could be a space much like the one that's at Brunswick and Brunswick Green, which sees multiple yearly uses. It has concerts, ice skating, picnicking with food trucks, Halloween parades, weekly farmers markets, and more. And there's no reason that we couldn't have the same with this space. And in Brunswick, it's a very visible attraction for the town, presenting itself as a place where one might want to move to and live. It's a plus on that side as well. It's my understanding that we had a chance--
Could I ask you to wrap your comments up?
Yes, one sentence. It's my understanding that we had a chance to acquire this property several years ago and didn't follow through. And to me, it would be a travesty not given a second chance if we lost it again. Thank you.
Thank you, Marty.
Good evening. My name's Guy Tonno Quitruchie. I'm a Freeport resident. I think the uses for a piece of property like that, discussing them here tonight, is kind of putting the cart before the horse, but I think it will probably also prove to be an invaluable kickoff of the information to inform the process. I absolutely support the purchase of the property if its primary beneficiaries and users are the community and the residents of Freeport. That would be truly refreshing and should be the priority. The activity section that was in some of the online information is particularly pragmatic. It presents the potential for a long-term town benefit. If it's properly designed and implemented, administered, it would function, it could function as a town common of sorts. This is a widespread municipal construct in existence for decades across the country, and many of them are really successful. Perhaps the climbing wall and the fire pits could create an unwanted liability for the town insurers. However, I think the transportation hub would likely turn into another parking lot for tourists, so perhaps that concept is best located closer to the parking garage, so as not to displace local users, restrict the parking. Maine Department of Community Development offers Community Development Block grants to revitalize public infrastructure and economic development. Additionally, there are $1.3 billion available through the governor's office and Maine Economic Recovery Grants to support community revitalization and economic strength projects. Department of Agriculture has been a vital supporter with technical assistance and resources to farmers' markets. FreePat has its own tax increment financing problem. I don't know what the fund balance is there, if there is any there at all, but it's just for this type of project. Successful chambers of commerce can be instrumental in soliciting corporate donations. So hopefully, ideas will continue to come forward. The town gets a second bite at the apple here. Please don't miss it. Thank you.
Thank you, Guy.
My name's Ken Murphy. I've been a property owner on Lower Flying Point for 43 years and a full-time resident for 17 years since I retired as a cardiologist in Massachusetts. My granddaughter graduated from Holy Cross a couple of years ago, and we went down for a parent's weekend. And we ended up in a town market in Worcester. Worcester's come a long way, but this was in an old factory. And it was 10 o'clock on a Sunday morning, and the place was hopping with activity. It had all kinds of shops and restaurants and all kinds of things. And what thought that I had when I saw it for the first time was, this is what Freeport needs. This is what would bring, would bring life back to Main Street in Freeport. And what I've been thinking would be that putting a Quincy Market-type, maybe two-story structure with a fountain and outdoor dining for the season and having shuttle vehicles driving around Freeport, taking people from one place to another, would make this, would be a totally new, it would be unique in this area. It would be an attraction for locals. It would be an attraction for tourists. It would pay for itself with the tenant money that could be given to the town. There aren't many negatives to it that I can think of, and my hope would be that that would be one of the things you'd want to consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on, Sally.
Hi, I'm Sally Walsh from Staples Point area. I started reading these things, and my first question was trying to understand if the town needed a piece of land to complete some of their municipal desires, needs, whatever was in the downtown vision plan. And then I saw the things we wanted to do with it, but we don't own it yet. So the two questions I had is that do we need to buy this land in order? And then two, we had some bad taste in our mouth from the past plan for this piece of land, and I'm not sure that that's not coloring why we're here tonight. So the question is, if we do not buy it, but the people want to have something there, all these ideas, do we have that opportunity if somebody else buys it? So the question then becomes, who needs to own that piece of land to ensure these ideas get implemented, if that's what the town wants, the citizenry? If that's the case, then we also have to come up from a funding mechanism in order for the citizenry and the town to find the money to do that. So I think the first question is, does the town, the municipal part of the town, need that piece of land? Or do we need to buy it for the citizens, and they need to participate in it? So, thanks.
Hi, Kathleen Sullivan from Moose Crossing. I'm here as Kathleen Sullivan, not in any way representing Freeport Climate Action now. And you're all going to be really surprised about what I have to say, because you're going to think I'm going to say that we have to have green spaces, and we have to have wild gardens, and, you know, parks are really important. And of course, they really, really are. And I'm enchanted by all the ideas that you've, that we've talked about just now in terms of what that space could look like if we had, you know, play equipment and benches and, you know, wild gardens and an opportunity to use it for vendors. I think it's, those are wonderful ideas. But what I'm really, what I find is, an inch above that is the wish and the concept of using that space as an example of the very first beginning of putting in affordable housing, so that we begin to have this be what we've been talking about for a long time now, which is having this be a place where people live and where people can walk and where people can access all of the necessities in town without a car. So that's another climate action goal that I think is really important, is to be able to have enough housing downtown so that people can get to places without a car. And I'm talking about affordable housing. I'm talking about the downtown being the kind of place it was here 40, 50 years ago, where people lived downtown and could afford to live downtown, and where workers can afford to live downtown. And there are, from what I understand, communities that, municipalities that have worked and figured out a way, owned the property and figure out a way to provide that kind of housing. And I think if we had it at that space, we'd be saying, we care about housing here. We care about where people live, and we care about bringing more people to town. And I also think, what about Memorial Park? Now, I know it's not right on town, and it's not as visible, but, and it's got that great giant, you know, monument in the middle that makes it, could we take that down? Could we redo Monument Park? It's bigger than this piece of property. Could that be redesigned so we could use that as our downtown park, as our park? And that's enough. I'm finished.
Thank you, Kathleen.
Hi, my name is Chalmers Hardenberg.
Can I just say, I meant to say buy the property. Okay, sorry. And could call it, otherwise we could have Burger King there.
How many people on Burger King? Okay, checking.
I'm here as a citizen living at 11 Somerset, just down the road here, not as a journalist at this point. I just have three major points. The first one is, I think Councillor Pilch is wrong about, we're going to go into negotiations about this. When Ed Bradley was a councillor a few days ago, he sat right there and he said, this is the deal. We talked about it with the Moesers. They came down from 506-something thousand to 530,000. We have four, three people at least were willing to come up with 130,000, among whom is Susan Norser, who is here tonight, Ford Reiki, and Ed himself. 400,000 is what we, the town, have to come up with. I thought Ed was pretty firm. There's no negotiation about that. This is what the Moesers are saying this is the price. If we back out of that, if we say, well, let's negotiate, I think we're cutting our own throat. Okay, what do I want to see happen? Yes, I want to see us buy it. I think that all the ideas that have been presented are great. I think we need to stay dynamic. We need to stay flexible. We don't want to put something there which is pachy, affordable housing, which is never going to move for the next 50 or 100 years. And the second thing is, I'd like to see those uses demonstrate how Freeport is environmentally conscious, that we have, the town councillors passed, a target for reducing our emissions by 65% in seven years. And I think that's what this prime location should be used for. Thank you.
Thank you, Chalmers.
Live right here in town. So I grew up in Freeport. And the thing with this particular property, and if the town does buy it, we should look at what it once was, before it was an empty lot, and it was two apartment buildings. And they had small businesses underneath them, the button business, which I absolutely loved going as a kid and walking through all the boxes looking for buttons. And it was also a ribbon shop. So if the town were to take this kind of a place and build with it, why not turn it into affordable housing? Have it be so that people that work and live can actually live in Freeport, because right now, that is not the case. So being able to have a place that can do that, and why not make the ground floor affordable stores for people that live in Freeport to actually have a chance to run a business in town? Because you cannot with the prices that the rents are for this town. So why not do that? Have the town, have the beginning of this, of the neighborhood of the uptown area be an introduction that way. Have it be a place that people can actually live, work, and actually maybe grow their businesses and have new businesses start in Freeport. So I think having that, like I said, that's what the empty lot used to be. So why not bring that back?
Thank you. Last year.
My name's Suzanne Watson. I live at 21 Carriage Road. I've lived there for almost 18 years. I'm also the executive director of Meeting House Arts. It's no secret that I've appeared before you several times in the last year to suggest possible uses of our public park space here in town. Meeting House Arts has been part of the ongoing discussions regarding the town visioning plan since its inception and has gladly taken the role of leading the realization of arts and culture, the arts and cultural goals of that plan. And as a brief reminder of what that means in terms of what we are here to talk about tonight, the visioning plan undertaken and accepted by the town council has three distinct arts and cultural goals. One is to bring more outdoor performances and festivals to the downtown. Second is to bring more local art, art installations to downtown. That can be benches. It can be bike racks. It can be a lot of the things we've talked about here. It could be an artful playground. It could be an artful garden. But, you know, the idea here is the local public art. The third one is to create more infrastructure that supports arts and music in the downtown. And all of these goals towards bringing greater arts and cultural resources to downtown bear on the discussion we have in front of us tonight. While we have Memorial Park and we have Winslow Park to use at present, each has its limitations. Memorial Park has a statue and accompanying cannons and such, limiting its central use and central ability to use it for whatever open purposes we might have. Winslow Park, also, there is a train that passes by six times a day. That has had some issues with some of the music and festivals that we've had down in Memorial Park this last summer and the summer before. Winslow Park isn't downtown. So I think that 22 Main Street is smack center downtown and open to our imagination as to its future use in service to arts and culture. It's exciting to envision a possible performance space where Freeport can decide what it creates to celebrate its local artists and performers. Imagine a Dixieland band on the Fourth of July, or an arts fair with artisans demonstrating their talents for all the town and our visitors to see. Or a combination of events, music, art, farmer's market, dance, Shakespeare in the Park. Imagination is only limited by what we think we can do, right? We have to make, and we made no secret of the interest Meeting House Arts has in an outdoor pavilion downtown. Whether or not 22 Main Street is a possible location is yet to be determined, but it does fit the stated desire of the Freeport citizens by way of the town visioning plan for more downtown space to attract a growing community of artists, craftspeople, and makers. We have in front of us the chance to start on that reality. And it is my hope we not lose what is right in front of us to protect for many years to come. Citizens of the next century will thank us for what we consider doing and at least leave the door open to what that might be. Thank you.
Thanks, Suzanne.
Hello, my name is Susan Nurse, Pleasant Hill Road in Freeport. And this is a time of year to be thankful. And I'm thankful for all the people in the room that are willing to come forward and bring ideas to the town council and so that we can share our thoughts and urge them, the council, to acquire the property at 22 Main Street. I'm calling it the hub of Freeport. I am in favor of purchasing the property. I think that there are many uses available for the hub, some of them that have been shared today. Many of them come from the downtown vision plan that was created. And one of the things that comes to mind immediately about the hub is the railing. You know the railing, the Ben &amp; Jerry's railing that was, that's gone. Well, that place could be where the railing could go, that provides information for everybody that comes into town. A big map with all the things that are exciting about our town that show the trail system, where cemeteries are if somebody's doing a genealogy, where to find EV bike charging stations, pedicabs, electric bike rentals, many of the things that Joyce Veyou said when she came up. The hub could be that wayfinding center. Where is the library? What's going on there? The Winslow Park, Memorial Park. It's a starting place for scavenger hunts for kids in town or for the adults to look at the historical markers that are spotted different places around town. But the hub would be more than just the place to start. It would be the place to be. It would be the place to hear musical performances, plays, speeches, to play cribbage and chess, to play bocce and horseshoes, to sit by the fire pit, to climb the wall, to explore the arboretum with Maine trees that are native, trees that are native to Maine, to see an art display or make art with others, to gather for road races, events, and festivals. I mean, think of the possibilities. How many people in here could agree that those all could happen right next door? So I, before my time runs out, I have a very special thanks to the offer, to offer, and that is to the Thomas Moser family. They are being very generous in their exclusive offer of this special property to the town at a discounted price. I'll say it again, an exclusive offer to the town at a discounted price. They have been great stewards of the property, allowing various groups to use it over the years. One can never-- One can never know exactly when a purchasing opportunity like this will come about, and this is an interesting one for the town to consider. Perhaps the purchase should be presented to the voters in the form of a referendum. I think Councilor Fornier mentioned that to me when we chatted. It's a good place to start. And I know that there are creative thinkers on the council that will explore available funding options to make the purchase possible. Now is the time to acquire the hub and use it to its fullest value. Thank you for your time.
Thanks.
Please have a question. First off, I'm in favor of buying it.
Can somebody pass her the mic? Just, no, you can stay there. We'll pass you a mic.
Just as part of the whole consideration, is this going to be a park? Is Adam's design going to be built?
The one out in front?
The municipal park?
Yeah, that's still in the works, so the, yes.
Does everybody know about this?
Probably not.
No.
Probably not.
Because that may impact what we do with that piece.
Yep, fair enough. So, fair point, and I'm happy to share. So the year or so ago, we got a grant from T-Mobile for $50,000. I think we matched it with another $50,000 from town funding. Adam Bliss, our town engineer, has kind of led the charge to redevelop the lawn in front of Town Hall into a more accessible space and a more public space. So the idea is a central feature of some sort, a short retaining wall kind of along, parallel to Main Street that you could sit on. So it's almost like there's, not quite an amphitheater, but there's a sitting wall, there's a central patio area, and then, of course, there's the steps in front of Town Hall, which we've used a couple of times in recent weeks. Unfortunately, not for happy events. So that's still in the works. And there's a phase two that has more to do with the parking lot and accessibility from entering Town Hall on the side. But there is a public oriented space that's in the works. I think it should be next summer or more. Was supposed to start, but we had issues with getting the granite.
Got to lead, next summer. Soon we can get someone to do the work.
So soon. The money's already there, plan's already there. It's already been approved, permitted, so, good point. Thanks, Ellen. Could be part of the vision, for sure. Who else has something to add? Kathleen?
I have something else to say, but I'm going to say something that is probably controversial maybe with this crowd. But Freeport has an incredible, an incredible history of generous, generous landowners and residents who have donated Winslow Park, Memorial Park, all over the place, right? And Thomas Mosher has been in town, has made a lot from the town, and the access he has to all the visitors to town. It would be good if he donated the piece of property, just saying. And I'm not sure if you've tried to get that to happen or whether he just doesn't want to deal. But anyway, what I think needs to happen with this property, however, is affordable housing. We need to be able to provide in Freeport, close to where they're working, residences for the people who work uptown, young people. You know, we need to energize the town with younger people on Main Street. It would be a great place. I hear people say, well, nobody really wants to work and they just don't want to work. They don't want or can't live out in Lisbon and Lewiston, spend all the money getting here to work in retail jobs. People who work here, who own the businesses, see that, believe that young people need to live closer. And honestly, you know, as white as the crowd here is, we really need young people in town. And, you know, I live uptown, we've lived here. I hear from lots of people from, you know, far-flung parts of the town saying, here's what uptown needs, we need a park uptown, you know. And Wins, I mean, Leon Gorman Park has been mentioned as a park. That's another place to do things. But we need people, young people here. Thanks.
Thanks, Kathleen.
Lynn Schaefer, I live up on Highview Road. And I'll say right up front, I strongly support the town buying this parcel so that the town can control it. We've heard so many good ideas of what can be done with the parcel, whether it's as park or affordable housing. As a retired architect, I look at it in terms of urban planning and I see a huge opportunity, which I'm not the first to see it. But this is one of the first things people see coming into town. And I think we really want to be able to control this property, whatever we do, to make sure that it conveys to people coming into town who we are, what we value. It's the entrance to town. Let's make sure it says what we want it to about the town. Thank you.
Do we have any hands on Zoom?
You do not yet.
Andrew Arseneault, Route 1 South. I guess I'm opposed to the town buying this property because I think it's going to be off the tax rolls. And I think the unintended consequences of not having development there of some sort is also going to burden our taxpayers. You know, obviously, we've had three very generous donations. Maybe we could find four or five more and, you know, the town wouldn't have to put any money into it if they're going to purchase it. It's very nice that three people stepped up and said they donated a large amount of money, if that's true. And, you know, if we have people in town with means, maybe they should step up and pay it. But, you know, my taxes went up this year. My taxes go up every year. And I think it's, you know, we got to look at, what are we going to do? Like a couple of people have said, when I graduated high school, you could rent a block up, you could rent an apartment uptown over Patagonia and the block for 25 bucks a week. A lot of the local people lived in town. We tore down all the houses, Beans tore down a lot of them, not their fault, they bought them. But there's no place to live in the downtown, really, where you can come and get a rent. The project got killed. As far as I'm concerned, that ground is salted. I mean, because if I was a developer and I looked at Freeport, I'd say, no, thank you. I'm not coming and fighting that battle. Previous developer had 200 grand into it, he told me, out in the parking lot, and, you know, lost his permit. So that's the message we sent, was it's not a welcoming town. It's not how good the corner looks, it's not whether we have art out there. You know, that's all nice stuff, but we have Hedgehog Mountain, we have other parks, we have Winslow Park, we have Wolf's Neck Park, we have trails, we have, we couldn't get a bike path up to Hedgehog Mountain. We're having a hard time getting bike paths out around the, out around the fields out there. Somebody told me the other day, we're having a hard time coming up with money to expand the parking space out there. There's plenty of resources that we could, plenty of, plenty of places we could allocate resources besides right next door. So if anything, I'd like to see some kind of affordable housing downtown. I hate to pick on, you know, the previous person that said the police station was there. No, it was on the other corner. There was two apartment houses there, there was buttons and things and ribbons and things, and that's all there was on the corner. And across the street, there was another house, and that was the police station. So I'd really like to see, I just can't see how, you know, we can buy one more piece of land just to have all these good things we say we're going to do on every piece of land we buy. You know, now we're going to tear down the statue down on Bow Street down there and move that someplace else so we can use that. We were going to have a bandstand down there because we had to have concerts there. Now we're going to have concerts here. Now we're going to have concerts, you know, down at Winslow Park. We can only do this in so many places. Really need to focus what we're doing on that piece of property. If somebody wants to step up and buy it, donate to the town, I guess that's fine. I just don't see tax dollars going towards it, you know. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Did you say we had somebody on Zoom?
Yeah.
Were we?
Did? I don't, it was John, I don't see him online right now. Maybe he'll hop back on.
Don't be shy. Anybody else in the room who wants to stand up? Come on up, huh?
I'm Bob Stevens. I live on Wolf's Neck Road as well. And I came here really undecided of what I wanted to say, and I'm not sure that I'm certain on either side of this right now. But we do need affordable housing. I don't think it needs to be
It's not you.
On, on, on Main Street. I think it needs to be someplace close to downtown. But it can go someplace else. What people are describing here tonight can't go someplace else if it's going to be part of, of the center of town. The, so I guess I thought I would say, don't, don't buy this unless we have a set use for. But what I've heard here tonight, what I think is actually more important than some of the ideas that you've heard tonight is the fact that people are here talking about it tonight. And I think that what started in Freeport recently with effort going into the vision, it's involved people in it. And I think that if the town does buy this, you will be offering another opportunity for people to stay engaged with what happens downtown. If something, just commercial goes in there, it's there, we all know it's there. We're no longer engaged in what should happen, making it happen, and enjoying it. So I think you got to figure out some way, and it's expensive. I'm worried about the expense of it. You know, Andrew's right, taxes are tough. Is there a way of doing this by finding some grants to use for some of it? Will more people come forward, as Andrew suggests? I think you got to do something about it. I think we've got to acquire it, even though we don't know absolutely what we're going to do with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Val.
Hi, I'm David Webster. I live in Freeport, Labor Spahn Road. And I feel everybody has pretty much expressed a lot of what I have, would want to say. But I felt as though I should just get up and say that I too am in favor of us finding a way to afford this and to make good use of it. You know, the vision and of, for downtown really came out of years of being concerned about the tax base and the, whether retail outlets are going to be viable in the future. In my memory, at least that's the piece I've held on to. And I think that we need to be thinking about how we protect the tax base in the central part of town in order that we protect the residential sections of town from not having to pick up the slack if the value of buildings on Main Street go down. And so I think that part of, the other piece of what the vision has been that I hear about that resonates for me is that Freeport becomes a destination rather than a place where you come in, shop, and leave. And, and so I think that being attractive as an entryway into town, being a place that's visible for things like the farmer's market or arts activities or performances and events, and having the sign, the post, the rail back, are all ways that kind of will communicate to visitors and to the community itself that downtown Freeport and Freeport itself is viable. It's a wonderful place to live, a wonderful place to come to. I too am really concerned and hope that we can have affordable housing. I agree. I've talked to many people, young people especially, who work in businesses in downtown Freeport. Very, very few of them live in the vicinity and it costs them to commute. But I'm not sure that the formula is right for a space that size to be able to afford affordable housing. And if, in fact, you were going to do something like that, I would hope that the first level would be inviting in some way to the community as a businesses or activity or creative space. I love the idea of it being a hub of community activity and being the first thing that people see when they come into town from this direction. It's important, I think we invest in our town. And many towns across New England have lost opportunities to invest in their communities, and they don't have spaces that they wish they had now. And so I'm in support of this, and I think we need to be thoughtful about, as others have mentioned, the taxes. And that doing something creative here and drawing people to this town and bringing the community itself together is going to help support the sustainability of Freeport as a viable, active, livable community. Thank you.
You have a hand up online?
We do.
You want to take that?
Sure.
Okay, we're going to take FEDC online.
FEDC, I assume, is that Mary? Got her hand up? Or somebody? Somebody from FEDC? You should be able to unmute and speak. There we go, she is. Oh, we can't hear you, Mary, you got to unmute. Don't worry, don't worry.
Can you try again, Mary? Yep, we can hear you now. Nope. You just muted again. You need to unmute, Mary.
At work?
Yes, there you go. Go on.
Okay. As a resident of Freeport, but also, as you know, I had a lot to do with the downtown vision implementation. And I'm super excited to hear all of the ideas that people have brought tonight. And I think the messages, yes, we want all of those. You know, we'd love to have the meeting place in town. So we'd love to have the wall back in town so that people can put spaces up. And I think the encouragement that I would have is, we're talking about one property, but I would encourage Freeport to have the plan and the spaces identified for all the needs that we have. So if this isn't affordable housing, then where is it? If we do want this to be the place where people meet, then where are the other elements? And where do they go? And how do we tell developers that that's, this is where we want it? Because I think we can bring people to Freeport to do some of the building that we want if we tell them where it is and we encourage them where to be and we, as a community, agree where we want all these things. So I'm encouraging us to think more globally about where do we want all the things that we say we want in downtown? Because they won't all fit on this one particular property. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Anybody else in the room or on Zoom? We're here mostly to listen, so curious to hear thoughts from anybody who hasn't spoken, who wants to share. Anyone? Anybody shy, needs a little extra encouragement to come on up? I promise to be polite. Going once. I'll sort of point out to those of us up here that next up would be our turn to speak. So if you want to start formulating your thoughts on what you want to say, give you a little bit of extra time, come on up.
Kathy Smith, and I live in Wolf's Neck. And I came here to listen and not say anything. But I just appreciate all the thoughtful comments tonight. This is the first thing I've been involved in, in town. And I'm just really excited to see the town involved in this way. And I thought that somebody who said that the town controlling this property is going to continue that kind of involvement. I think whatever happens there, whoever said, we just need to control it. I have no idea whether you could actually control the development, but if, in fact, you want housing there, you want the kind of housing that you want. And if you don't own it, you can't control it. So whether it's a combination of public money and private money, I think this is a huge opportunity not to miss for the town. It's at a turning point. I've been very involved in cultural tourism, so I think the comment that David made about this being a destination, that needs to be part of what's in our minds about this being a place for people to live. But the people who come here support our economy, so that's critical also, is getting people to come here and stay overnight, spend more money, come back. It's not a pace to pass through. So I just, I want to support everybody who said, I think the goal is to control this property with public and private money if you can, and then decide what's best for the town. And as Mary says, also, to do it thinking about And as Mary says, also to do it thinking about all the spaces in town and how that works out. Thank you. Thanks for this opportunity for everybody to speak.
Hi, I'm Judith Furwell. I live at 50 Pine Street in Freeport. I very much want to see the land at 22 Main Street stay undeveloped. And I have a very strong reason for that, that was taught to me by the descendants of the people who developed, so to speak, who lived here a long, long time ago. And we're doing an amazing job in Freeport of bringing that history forward right now, which is thrilling to me. It was also thrilling to me hugely to drive into the parking lot and see so many cars here. So I just feel like the health of our town is increasing by the day. And I have children and I have grandchildren, and they live in Maine. And I want them and all the children here, now and in the future, to have clean air, to have good ecological balance in their community. And taking down the trees that are on that property would be, not only would it break my heart, I actually told one of my high school classmates that would happen over my dead body, and then I went home and thought, oh, I really said that out loud. So now I'm saying it publicly. But just, I love the input tonight. I love all the various ideas. I really respect everybody's point of view and deeply appreciate the hard work that's gone on for us to get to this point tonight. Thank you.
Anybody else? Yep. You're good.
Hi, I'm Mary Lemer. Live here in Freeport. And I was on, I was one of your Zoom people, but I got off work and I came here. I couldn't figure out how to chat to you on the list. This is easier. Anyway, I just, thank you. First of all, thank you guys for offering this as a workshop. I really appreciate a resident of being part of this, and I know it's a lot of your time, and I appreciate it. And I just would say, I would love us to purchase the property. I'm not really sure what we should do with it, but I would love to put my two thoughts that I would love us to make that move. Thank you.
Good evening. Jay Yomaz, Maple Avenue. And shouldn't surprise you that I'm up here in support of the town purchasing the property. I'm not going to reiterate too many things that have already been said, but I really feel like this is the deal of the century. Not because of the metaphor that it's a fair, just not only that it's a fair price, and I think the Mosers should be greatly thanked for that, but Suzanne Watson mentioned something about how it's the generations to come in 100 years or 50 years that will appreciate this. And I really believe that strongly, really, really believe that strongly. I can tell you, as a property owner and a developer in Freeport, that at the range of $500,000, this really is a fair deal. It would be as if someone was offering you a lot next to your house for 25 grand or 50 grand, and you wanted to grab it for future use. And if you decide not to use it, you could sell it and get your money back. And we've used the metaphors about second bite at the apple. This is a really special opportunity that I think we should take very seriously and not let the opportunity pass if we can help it. Thank you for your attention and consideration.
Thanks, Jay. Anybody else? I spend a little extra time trying to encourage people to speak, because we're going to have tons of time and tons of opportunity to talk about this property, I'm guessing, over the next weeks and months. But this is exclusively a good time to listen to what you have to say if there is anybody else who wants to come up and speak. So I want to be encouraging, but I don't want to belabor it. So going once, twice.
We have a hand up online.
We do have a hand up online. All right, one more.
All right.
Bring it over.
We are going to bring over Sam Kapala.
Hey, folks. Thanks for taking my online comments. Sorry I couldn't be here. I got the second kid to bed about 14 seconds ago, so. And that I think is the plight of many in my age group. And I'm not in the room, obviously, but I don't see very many of us there tonight. So I thank those of you who are able to make it. And there's a lot of familiar faces, but as always, I want to remind the council to think about the people who are not in the room, who are probably realistically vastly outnumbered the people who are in the room tonight. I think the downtown vision plan has been brought up as a touchstone multiple times in the parts that I have been able to listen to tonight. I think that's a really good piece of work that the town has, and we definitely should not forget about it. I think we should notice that in the renderings and some of the plans that Principal Group prepared, there are buildings on that lot. And I think we should also remember that of when the RFP for the downtown vision plan went out, the consistent thing among all the respondents to the RFP was that everybody said that we need housing downtown. We need housing to keep our downtown healthy. And one of the things that, you know, I think all the ideas that I've heard tonight are great ideas. I think there's a place for all of them. I think, of course, we can't ask one piece of land to ask to work too hard, but I think that any serious proposal for Freeport in the downtown area really needs to keep housing in mind. I think it would be great if the housing can be affordable. I think realistically, we should not let the perfect be the enemy of the good, and any housing that we can encourage on that site, doesn't have to be the whole site, we don't have to cut down all the trees, minimum lot size in the VC1, in case anyone's wondering, is 8,000 square feet. And planning board dropped the density to zero, so you can build basically at any density you want on, you know, given a lot size. So there's probably, I don't know the particulars of that lot, but there may be the possibility to break a piece of it off and use it for a small housing development or a mixed-use development or something like that. I also think, you know, I would support generally the idea of taking this to the town for a referendum. But I think that my guess, and this is where I personally would be, is that there's not going to be a huge appetite for spending lots of taxpayer dollars on this parcel. I think that any move that the town needs to make needs to be largely funded by either some mix of private donations or revenue that's coming back from the use of the lot. I'm sure there are solutions. And again, I think everybody who's spoken tonight has had great ideas. You know, I would think that a park on part of it would be great. I think the old growth oak trees that are there, or the relatively old oak trees that are there, are great trees, sure they can stay. I think some public uses are great. But again, just want to make sure that we remember that our downtown really needs housing and that that message should come from the council. If it is, you know, if, or the council at least should be repeating that message if we are going to move forward as a town in purchasing this property. So, you know, I would generally support it, but I'd like to see the town stand behind its commitment to building more housing. So, thanks.
Thanks, Sam. All right. Anybody else on Zoom especially who wants to speak? There's quite a few people, but we haven't heard a lot of Zoom voices yet. If there are no more hands there, and I'll scan once more around the room. All right. So let's bring it up to the table here and see what you all think about what you've heard. Councilor Fornier.
I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. I've been around town for a little bit, and the town always has a history of going out and doing projects, so that we think are great projects. And then what do we find down the road? We find down the road, we had to have a maintenance department that we never had of one that it started out with, now it's three, and it's looking to go to four. And that maintenance department takes care of our parks and whatever, and what I'm saying is, I guess, go back to Andy, one of the reasons we see our costs going up is we have all these good intentions, and they're going to be paid for. And we need to think about that on this property. I strongly believe that it needs to go to referendum, and I strongly believe it needs to be at a referendum when people are going to turn out, either when we vote on the school budget, or I preferably would like to say it November. I know unfortunately, here we are, early in the year, and November's a long ways away. But this is an item that I think all the town needs to have input on and to make the decisions. What really is troubling, not on this particular property and buying it or whatever, but we really sent a message out, and I know of two developers who are going to come to town and build here that don't want nothing to do with us. So if we want to support our town growing, and we want to support something out of the retail, and we want housing for people, we got to get our act together. We got to get our act together in zoning. We got, our planning boards doing a good job. But we sent a terrible message, you know, to a lot of people. And I hope we can get all over that and bring back that Freeport is a place to do business. But if you talk to a lot of people right now, that's not our reputation. They don't want to come here. That's troubling for me as the council is sitting here, and we talk about generations, because if we don't have a strong task base coming forward, generations coming down the road, we're going to, you know, we're going to be in trouble. So we really need to think this through. So I, if the will of the townspeople want to buy the property, I fully support that. And the councils, the new councils all know this, but the rest of my friends on the council know, I still am hopping on the capital budget, where we were fully funded seven years ago, and now we're not fully funded, and we're looking at significant expenses, they're going to have to be covered somewhere. Being a conservative, that troubles me also, but if it's the will of people to buy it, I'm sure we'll come out with something. It'd be great if it was totally done through donations, that would be awesome, and make it a little more difficult. But that's where I stand at this point, and I'm sure there'll be more input. And I really enjoy people coming and contacting me. That's very helpful. So please, love to hear from people. Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah. Sarah?
This is a great conversation. Thank you all so much for your input today. I keep thinking about what Councilor Pillsbury said earlier of the timeline. Every idea we have will take time, and I keep thinking about the landowner and if we've had that conversation with the landowner of what that timeline tolerance is, if it does go to referendum, that does take time. If we want to think about ways to fundraise, again, that takes time. So that, to me, seems like we have the will and we have the interest, but making sure we have the flexibility of that timeline is a big question I have.
You all have brought a lot of great information and a great amount of energy to this conversation. I think, just to share where I am and as I'm listening to all of you, as well as to the folks that we heard from prior to this meeting with folks that sent in comments, I definitely hear the concern about the cost. I'm aware of not only the cost of what it takes to purchase the land, but what it would take in terms of whatever the other investment was and where that money is coming from. I also want to note Andrew's point about taking that lot off the tax rolls and what that has to do in terms of the long-term impact on the budget. So those are all things that we're going to have to keep in mind. Really where I am focused is this idea of the timeline of purchase compared with the timeline of use and the decision about how we use it. I certainly hear, and we've heard from former councillor Bradley, who was instrumental in having this conversation with the Moser family, that there is some time sensitivity around this particular offer. And I think we'll need to figure out where the flexibility is on that, because none of this sounds like it can be decided in the next few days or weeks. It's distracting enough to see myself on the screen over here, but to hear myself coming from the back of the room. Part of, I think there's a tremendous opportunity, as many of you have noted, in terms of acquiring the land to control its use, or to direct its use, or to influence its use. And I think it does have an opportunity to play into the downtown vision plan, because one of the things that we've all been talking about, not just the council, but so many other bodies within the town and within the community, who are asking, how are we going to implement the downtown vision plan? Because we need to do a lot of our own housekeeping, as we've discussed, to set the conditions for developers to come in and build what we're asking them to build and what we say we want. But we can only do so much to influence that. And owning a piece of property or investing in a piece of property to help direct and set that motion has a lot of potential. However, I have, I do have concerns about buying the land without having a plan or having a clear decision about what we're going to do with it, because much like the downtown vision plan, you know, we can all agree that we want housing until we actually start looking at pictures of buildings on particular lots, and we suddenly find that there's a lot of disagreement about where we want that housing, what we want that housing to look like, how big is that housing? And so I wouldn't want to get into a position where we, there are so many people who are in agreement that we want to purchase this lot, but once we own it, we can't all decide what it is we're actually going to do with it. So I do really, I would really like to have more of a clear plan if the town is going to invest the money. However, the other piece of that is, as Guy mentioned, and certainly some other folks have talked about, there is a lot of funding available for towns to purchase land depending on what the use is going to be. And so having an understanding of what the use is also has a direct impact on what, where that money might come from that would allow us to purchase it without it being a huge taxpayer expense. So I'm certainly interested in exploring what those other funding possibilities are, whether it is for conservation land, outdoor recreation land, affordable housing. All of those have potential for funding sources, but for us to purchase the land at a town expense without knowing that may preclude us from actually accessing those funds if those funds are available to purchase the land. So again, a lot of this comes down to the process of how we would sort through all of this to actually make a decision about what we were going to do with the parcel.
Good points. Councilor Pillsbury?
This is my turn, huh?
If you want to.
Not to put you on the spot, Caroline, can you remind us how big that lot is?
It's 2.55 acres.
And do we know, I don't know if it's helpful, could we pull up a visual of that in the, just sort of that area? Because there's other things at play, right? I kind of think it might help to level set where the town's existing property also is. We've got that parking lot that's not in play, it's privately owned. So I just think, in terms of clarity for the discussion, that might help.
Would you like Google Earth or like a survey?
I have no preference. Whatever's going to be easiest to pull up and to...
She's got maps.
Can I minimize? How can I? Oh, wait, up here?
Oh, excuse me.
There you go. It's coming slowly.
I just did it to buy myself more time to figure out what to say.
My computer is helping you.
I was just going to say, you suggest that you could start talking while it's coming up, but.
Yeah. So that's fine.
Oh, wait, it's coming up.
I don't think we can afford all that.
Oh, and it always brings me to South Freeport. All right, so you can see here is Town Hall, Town Hall entrance, Town Hall parking lot, the parking lot on the property next door, where the area where the Moschers had an easement for the interconnectivity road down from Town Hall to Depot Street, and then these are parking lots that the town of Freeport does not own, they are privately owned, but they park there on a daily basis, shared parking is wonderful, and the stone wall's about the property marker there.
Can you zoom out a little bit? Like, what do we own at public safety?
So, public safety, you own this piece over in here where the white barn is and the road right around. This here is the Davis Warehouse, privately owned by ELO Bean, and the railroad tracks are over in here.
Yep. So, thank you for doing that. We've heard a lot of great comments, and I think it's an important piece of property, but I'll echo exactly what Eric said. I mean, to me, we're throwing out great ideas, but we don't have a real plan in place, and to me, that makes me uncomfortable, because I really like a good plan and a good process. And I think we need to look holistically at it. I mean, we got a lot of feedback from the town around our visioning and what we think the next iteration of our town looks like, and I think we need to honor that. And I appreciate all the comments tonight, but it's overwhelmingly in support of buying this and using it for a specific purpose, and I personally agree that we should do something with it, but I also have concern that without a plan in place, we can't further the overall plan and process for the town. It's also at a significant cost, and I don't, and while I appreciate the pricing of it and the fact that private citizens have stepped up to offer their own funding for it, there's still a gap. And to Andy's point, we, that would be a big impact on the taxpayers. And to Darrell's point, we've got other things in the capital budget coming up that are necessary for the operation of our town, and we don't fully have a funded capital budget for the next five years. So I want to be really mindful of the burden that we're going to put on taxpayers of this town, and this is a big decision. And I think that there's opportunity for private fundraising. I think there's opportunity, we still have some ARPA money left, I'm not sure exactly the amount, I think it's like 160,000, right? Maybe a little less?
I thought we were under 100.
That is around 100.
Yeah, I thought we were like 96 or something, but I'm not 100% sure on that.
I mean, I think that, you know, I know there's a sense of this is a limited opportunity, and it's a time-sensitive opportunity, but I personally struggle with not knowing how we're going to approach this in a reasonable and sustainable way. I think that we have a great opportunity in front of us, but I don't want to rush it and make it something that isn't a positive. So that's a hugely long way of saying, I don't know what to do. I think we've gotten some really good feedback, but to me, we need to be mindful of it. And I'm not saying this is, you know, we're not going to do this, I'm just saying, I think we've got our homework, we've got a lot of homework to do, and I just want to be very clear about that, that there's a lot of consideration, this isn't just buying one property in isolation, and I think if we approach it that way, I think that's a mistake. So, and just to be clear, the things that resonate with me are open spaces, a gathering place, a place for us to have community space and to have people active and engaged in the downtown, but housing is really important to me, and affordable housing and getting housing for our workforce is really important, and, you know, this can be a piece of that. But again, I think it's a piece of the puzzle, and I don't have clear definition on the rest of that puzzle at the moment. So, that's where I stand, but I do sincerely appreciate everyone's time and comment, especially coming up against a holiday. But I also think we do need to be mindful that this is a small group of our town, and there are folks that aren't able to, Sam Kabbalah's point, to be engaged tonight for a variety of reasons, and I think we need to be sensitive to getting their input and their feedback, because at the end of the day, this is something for our town, and we're just a small group of our town. So those are my comments. Again, I haven't left you with any firm idea of what we're going to do, but I did just want to let everyone know sort of where I'm standing and where I see things at the moment. So, thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Darryl?
People don't look at me like I'm crazy, but that's okay. When I look at the law here, you know, one of the discussions we had when this idea first come up is, we graciously use parking lot that we don't pay for that's below that. So we look at the Google map, and part of me is saying, if we're going to go out, we're going to go to a vote, are we only looking at half the opportunity here? Should we be looking at the corner of 22 Main Street, should be looking at that parking lot that's down all the way to West Street and Depot, because, you know, we talked about a police station, you know, or whatever, but boy, if part of me says, you know, maybe we ought to be looking at this whole piece, which would really, you know, allow us other opportunities for housing or whatever, are we all, yeah. So, you know, this is maybe a greater opportunity, maybe we need to combine it, and I don't know, I'm, that's kind of thinking out outside the box a little bit, but maybe this is the time to take a serious look at that, and if in fact we were going to send a plan to taxpayers and looking at the future of the town and other opportunities, I don't know if that would make sense or not.
Councillor Knight?
So, I've been hearing a lot of the sense of urgency in this conversation, and I'm new here, so I'm curious, is there actually urgency? Is there a deadline? Is there any sense of when we have to figure this out by, or we just feel like we need to figure it out now?
I think that's, there's not a factual answer to that, I think it's an opinion answer of how long the Mosher family is willing to wait for us to make up our minds. They've, yeah, so there's a lot going around, but I don't feel like I can speak on their behalf, so, you know, my sense is if we came up with a hard yes or a hard no tonight, that would send a strong signal. I don't think that's the way we're leaning, so I think the ball's going to be in their court for their urgency of the exclusivity of the offer, put it that way.
Yeah, I wonder if it was worth having a conversation there. So, just a thought.
To that point, I think that the, you know, we, the actual offer, and I think someone mentioned this, and I forget who, did say, you know, this was already negotiated, there was an actual offer, this was Chalmers that said this, and that is, that exclusive offer is in writing, but it does have an expiration date, and it's been extended just so we can have this conversation. But the question is, how much longer can we operate as if it is at that price? I just wanted to follow up on what Councillor Fornier said, the, he actually came in in a comment that didn't get raised otherwise, but we had an email from John Lowe that was raising exactly that same question, that if we were going to consider purchasing 22 Main, we should be in conversation also about the parking lot that is below that. When you look at that map, you know, we, right now, with the town offices sort of occupy this half of this whole block, and what we're talking about is the two other quarters of this block, both front and back, and I do think that there is some opportunity there, again, in terms of incent, not just incentivizing, but directing what it is we want to see in terms of the downtown vision, and that could be both open space as well as housing if you were looking at those two lots together. But that even further complicates how we pay for that and how we come up with that plan.
So, here are some of my thoughts. As a lot of people have pointed out up here and in the room, I counted 21 people who came up to speak, which by town council standard is actually pretty impressive, but in a town of 9,000 people is a pretty tiny fraction. As people were coming up, I realized how nice it was that I knew almost everybody on a first-name basis, which is wonderful. And what I love about living in a small town, but also representative of the fact that there's a very small number of people in town who have the time and the energy to put into the effort of being engaged in decisions like this. So there's a vast majority of people that we're not hearing from. I can't speculate what they might think. They might love these ideas, they might say, I don't want my taxes to go up a dollar, they, probably a lot of, you know, all the above, I'm sure. So that weighs heavily on me, because I represent the 21 people who spoke, everybody else in the room, but also everybody else in town. And I think to maybe Councillor Pillsbury's point, others, that we're stewards of the town funds, right? That's what people are looking to us to do. So, but by no means does that mean that I'm against purchasing the lot. So, I'm just saying that weighs heavily on me. Regarding the time crunch, we don't lose our opportunity when the exclusive offer expires, right? Worst case, they don't extend it again, it goes back on the market. It's been on the market for a long time. There was one bite, like Darrell pointed out, we have a reputation that we've built for ourselves, for better or for worse, but developers in the last six months have very wary about trying to propose a new project in Freeport. So, I'm not moved by the urgency of the offer. I'd like to take time to consider what we might do with the property. We do have the ability to shape what our downtown looks like, even if we don't own all the lots downtown, right? We're also entrusted with land use provisions and zoning, and we can say, we want retail here, we want housing here, we want open space and recreation here. We don't often do that on a lot-by-lot basis, I don't know if we're allowed to, but we can certainly say, these couple lots. We have some levers we can pull without having to buy up all of downtown. We do own some other buildings in downtown. It's been pointed out by some of us that we're not great landlords, we're not great real estate developers, that's not the business we're in, we're in the business of town government. So I like the thoughts about partnering with people, with organizations to think about what the lot should be, how it could add to downtown. I like the idea of asking all the other people who aren't here what they think, right? Maybe that's a referendum. My fear is, we're all jazzed up about all the things this lot could be, and if we say, great, let's put it out to a vote tomorrow, or March, or June, or November, and we say, hey, should we buy the lot or not buy the lot? That's a hard question for people to answer. I think if we go to them and say, should we buy the lot so that we can put a, you know, fill in the blank here, or even a this or this here, that's a lot more information for people to act on. So I feel like the surfeit of ideas we have is what's hampering us, right? It sounds like it's working in our favor to say, we can do so many things with the lot, but doing, being able to do so many things with the lot doesn't solve the problem of what should we do with the lot. So, I don't know that we need to solve 100% of those answers and have a fully drawn, permitted project before we go into buy the lot, but I do think we should have some suggestion. You know, there was a lot of talk recently about our, I got some emails about an ice skating rink, so maybe that's the highest and best use that we think is there, but if that's the case, we should be upfront about that, say, it's our intent to buy the lot so that we can do this with it, or explore these few things with it. And then last couple of things, so housing, yes, we all know we need housing, I think the entire room says we need housing, most of town agrees that we need housing. My opinion is that the principal group, the way I interpret the report, is we need housing within a walkable distance of downtown, and they even said we need a certain number of people to live within a walkable distance of downtown. They did not say, we need a certain number of people to live on Main Street. Main Street is our, you know, Main Street from West Street to Mallet Drive is the crown jewel of Freeport, right? South Freeport aside, and Wolf's Neck aside, and many other parts of town, but that's the, this is the place people come to see. This is the place that 2 million people come to visit every year. So we need to be really careful about what we do with that. I think we should continue to develop it as a destination, both for visitors and residents. So we had plenty of room for housing, Depot Street, Varney Road, lots of places that you can walk to downtown, and we should try as hard as we can to make those developable. So, yeah, so I think like the rest of you, you know, some on this camp, some on that camp, it was easy for me when people came up to, for me to mark, you know, are there people in the pro column or in the con column, it was much harder to get that sense up here. There was a lot of however, and on the other hand, which makes sense, it's, you know, it's what we're meant to do, we're meant to deliberate. So that's the way I would lean, is let's continue to discuss, deliberate. I love the idea of thinking about a holistic plan, not just a two-and-a-half acre plan, but a plan that includes all the land we own here, see if those parking lots are in play, we own all the public safety building, and we point out that we need a new police station, so there's some, you know, some more things to explore, and I think we should continue to explore them. Councillor Fornier?
You know, we can't take action, and I think we were very successful when we had the issue come up with the Sewell Board, and, you know, we have a ton of committees that we work with, but this, you know, really, I think it's an opportunity to get some good feedback, and I hope we, at the next council meeting, can have an open discussion, maybe form a committee of five with a specific goal and time period, so we don't kick this can down the road for a year. You know, and that, you know, if we were truly looking at sending this to a referendum for voter approval, you know, the year that's coming up is June for the school budget, that kind of gives us a timeframe where we'd have to come out with our ideas, what the price is, what the plan is, and give it to the voters. So I hope we can really have some more decisions on how to have a plan put together and not let this get kicked down the road, because this could, I think, is a great opportunity.
Not a bad idea. Councillor Pillsbury?
No, I agree 100%. If we don't put some action to it, we'll just wait until the next, someone says, what are you doing about this, and we'll debate it and talk about it a little bit and say, oh, we really should be doing something, but we need a timeline and we need a structure around it, and we just need to put that in place and have some deliverables and an expectation as to when we'll have something to come back.
So maybe we can each talk to our chair and suggest that, and give him our ideas about whether or not we'd want to serve on that committee, but.
You also have municipal facilities, you guys haven't done appointments for the upcoming year. I mean, generally, they do have done properties that we've owned, we haven't purchased a lot of properties in my time here, but we can look and see if that's under their purview. That would be a subcommittee of the council, three councillors, public meeting, but, for example, like the ordinance committee, in that smaller setting at different hours of the day, has been able to get through and get a lot of done in that small setting, and been able to get different people to participate, because you don't have to meet at 6 o'clock on the certain Tuesdays. So put that out there as possible idea.
Use that committee for that. Other thoughts before we wrap up? Councillor Smith?
Can I say one more?
Yeah, go ahead.
Susan Nurse again. I appreciate Councillor Fornier and Councillor Pillsbury bringing up the idea of what's the next step, and I really feel an energy that I don't want to lose, and I know that there are people in this room that would work with me to come up with something that we could either apply to a grant or research some funds, that Guy brought forth some ideas about funding. I don't know how to make that happen, but I don't want the momentum of this to get lost, and I think that's what you were saying. And I think that's what you were saying, Counselor Fornier, and so I'm here to say that I'm willing to do what needs to be done to bring that forward. I don't know how that happens, but maybe there's two ideas, like you suggested, Counselor Pills, to bring to the referendum, or you give the committee some direction and they really work to bring that forward, but I guess my reason for coming back up here is to really urge you to make a decision about what the next step is and not let it languish. Thank you.
So, Susan, while you're up there, can you take responsibility, are you, would you be willing to take responsibility to head that effort, the next step?
I would, but it sounds like there's a municipal facilities committee that might be more appropriate, and I don't know if there are citizen members of that, maybe there are already, I don't know. But anyway, I don't want to take up all your time, but I want to stress the urgency of making a decision to, if you're going to move this forward for the town to decide or consider or whatever, that if, you've heard a lot of ideas, that was the reason why we came here, to share ideas. But I, I feel like now you're saying, well, we've got too many ideas and we can't make a decision because we've got too many ideas. So it's kind of a six of one, half of, half a dozen of the other, so anyway.
Fair point. I'll offer that. My personal opinion, whatever we do, I don't think we should do in isolation. We shouldn't, you know, continue to have this wall and say, never mind, we'll figure it out and get back to you. If we do it at municipal facilities, I imagine a lot of public input happening at those meetings, or if we set up a separate joint committee with residents and counselors on it. I don't think it's a decision we should make on our own. I don't think that's right.
My name's Sam Smith, and one thing I don't hear in this discussion at all is mixed use, and I think that's a real potential. As an example, when I got out of college, I went to work in Washington and I was six blocks from the Capitol. I was paying a very low rent because I was on the third floor of a three-story row houses with apartments on the first, second, and third, and the basement. So in each row, you had a different income level. And, you know, one block away was a place to eat, a cafe, and two blocks away was a laundry. It was one of the most workable urban areas I've ever seen, and it's something, since you've got a lot of people who want low rent, is something that you should at least consider.
Good point. Thank you. All right, so I think we've got some homework. We meet again next Tuesday on the 28th for another workshop. That one's on moorings, mostly outside the Heresikeet River, and changes that are being proposed for that. Our next meeting, as an official council meeting, is December 5th, so that will be our next opportunity to set up a committee, take action, something like that. So I would encourage you to keep in touch with your counselors. If there's something you didn't get to say tonight, call them, email them. Most, I think, I speak for everybody in saying that we appreciate that kind of input, because it's hard to get a sense for what everybody's thinking. So continue the discussion. My hunch is maybe on the December 5th agenda, we might be able to put something on that agenda to actually take an action.
Okay.
Since we can't tonight.
And then you do have the new ability to email the entire council and town manager at council@freeportmaine.com. So if you want to send something to the entire council, that's an option. You can do that through the website as well, if that's easier for you.
Thank you. Oh, yeah.
I don't think we can take any action because this is a workshop. Can we poll the council that's here tonight to have an item on the next regular meeting and form that committee?
We have a placeholder.
Yeah.
That way, the citizens here know where we're going to be, so.
Yep.
I will be supporting forming that committee at the next meeting and hitting the ground running.
Whether it's municipal facilities or some other committee, some.
Either this facilities or whatever, but I like that idea, I think it makes sense.
I'm in favor of that as well. See, every other head up here is nodding, so, yep. So there you go. On the 5th, we'll set up a committee of TBD to figure out what the next steps are, and I like the idea of putting a timeline on it as well. You know, to have something ready for June is not a bad idea. I'd be supportive of that as well. Thank you all for coming, sharing your Tuesday night with us. Don't get applause at the end of every meeting, just to set your expectations.